...stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of items before we get started here. We received several emails late this afternoon about a 6.9 or 7.0 earthquake in northern Japan. And our sister city folks in Misato are telling us that it looks like everything's okay in Misato. It's still dark there, and they'll know more in a few hours, but at least that first year, it sounds pretty good that our sister city friends are okay. I also want to congratulate the Windhawks, and on behalf of everybody in Winona, wish them well this Friday in their quest for the state championship. And also to just wish my fellow councilmen and women and everybody a happy Thanksgiving, happy and safe Thanksgiving. So, anything from the city manager?
Just a quick update on Bud King from Chad.
Mayor, Council, ask for an update on Bud King Ice Arena. If you remember, this project was in three separate bid packages. We had the expansion of the building, the existing building, to accommodate the new refrigeration and resurfacer room. That is 100% complete. The ice system replacement was part of bid package two. I would put that about 90% complete. There are a few punch list items that need to be complete for that system to be considered 100% replaced. Bid package three was the indoor and outdoor dasher boards for the rink. Of course, the indoor boards are 100% complete and in place with one very minor adjustment that needs to be made. And the outdoor dashers are, what I would say, about 95% complete. So, they're up, glass installed, netting, appropriate netting. There's some glass replacement that needs to take place on the outdoor dashers. As long as it's a public meeting, I'll just take a second to say this, that we do have security cameras at Bud King. Since this is a significant investment, we have video surveillance on the outside area specifically. We are in the process of installing fence for the outdoor rink because that dasher board system, of course, is expensive. We are, as I mentioned, in the punch list phase where there are several items that need correction or completion. Of course, the indoor sheet is fully operational. The association, others have been using the indoor sheet for approximately seven weeks now. The outdoor rink will not be operational for another two to three weeks. We need the contractor from bid package two to come back and actually start that rink for us as part of the contract. And then again, we need consistent load temps, and we haven't had the consistent load temps yet that we need to make that outdoor ice. There were some questions about summer usage. I know that I have stated this several times, that this first year will limit the summer use as we kind of learn the system and understand, you know, even just taking the sheet of ice out, et cetera. And to understand better how we take out boards in the indoor rink and what that process looks like. But if individuals are interested in using that space in the summer, they can contact myself at the Park Rec Office, and we can kind of talk through the process to using that facility in the summer. The biggest thing that we're concerned about is the impact on that concrete floor. So, it's built for an ice rink. There's significant piping underneath. I think I've mentioned at other previous meetings that we literally would not bring the circus to Bud King, even though that was asked about. The circus is not something that could be held inside the Bud King Ice Arena. So, we have concerns about weight, capacity, and limit on that sheet of ice. And then finally, we would need to bring back pricing models to the council about hourly rates to rent, or if there were other fees to use the facility. And so, we still need to do that prior to any summer use. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Do you have any rough idea when you might be available to do numbers for rentals?
I would think that early, real early in spring, if not late winter, we could put something together. And again, I think, again, if anybody's interested, they should contact us, so we can just talk through to see if their usage is appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Do roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig Alexander.
Here.
Aiden.
Here.
Porziewkowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1 is an appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Luke Sims. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? I know he's here. You want to raise your hand? Okay. Thank you for your willingness to serve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 3.2 is the Light Up Winona Banner Request. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
No. It doesn't say in our agenda item where at Lake Park this banner would be placed, so if somebody can fill me in on that. Appreciate it.
Sure. The location is the main signposts that were installed by the Park Maintenance Building at Lake Park.
Okay, this is at Franklin and...
Yeah, Franklin and...
Sarnia. Sarnia, yeah. Okay. Just didn't know which... Sometimes there's a banner in front of the Lake Park Lodge, and that's why I was kind of... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hears.
Item 3.3 is a request to make Vilas Street an MSAS route and take Mark Street off the MSAS route. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hears.
Under new business, item 5.1 is a resolution in support of the Standing Rock Sioux Nation. This was adopted by the Winona Human Rights Commission, and I believe Gloria Elletori is here to present a letter from Chuck Ripley, the Chair of the Commission.
Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Gloria Elletori, and my address is 64... Is that there? 64 East Street, Winona. Dear City Council Members, I want to explain to the Commission reason for advising you to endorse the WDUAs resolution, whose key components read, "Be resolved that the Winona Dakota Unity Alliance stands in support for the Standing Rock Sioux Nation and the Protectors of Hannibal, North Dakota, as well as other points of resistance to pollution over water and soil and the destruction of sacred sites, including indigenous ancestral graves. Be further resolved that we demand safe passage for these protectors and express our deepest gratitude for their leadership and courage. Their struggle is for all of us and all our future generations. We believe endorsing the resolution accords with the covenant of friendship Winona has made with the Dakota people and their tribal governments, which have been anonymous in their support of the Standing Rock defenders. It took many years and much effort to craft this covenant, and more importantly, to build the trust and friendship that the covenant represents. The Commission believes that not endorsing the WDUA resolution will put this trust and friendship at risk. The core of the annual Great Dakota Gathering is truth and reconciliation circle. This is an opportunity for citizens of Winona to learn how the issues such as the restoration system, the violation of tribal serenity and treaty agreements, the disintegration of tribal heritage sites, and the environmental disasters have impacted and continue to impact the Dakota people today. These issues are at the heart of the Standing Rock protest. More than 300 tribal nations support them, as well as many cities, including Minneapolis and St. Paul. Last week, hundreds of Winona demonstrated their support for these protests. The resolution passed by the WDUA in no way endorsed violence or a specific political resolution outside of resistive pollution, protecting sacred sites and safety for the protectors. I would hope that these issues are not controversial in any context, and hope that these issues are very particular for not community that has pride itself and its relationship with the native people as Winona has done. Endorsing these resolutions will require no further actions and cost nothing. It will, however, signal that our commitment to the covenant of friendship remains strong even in difficult times."
Thank you very much. Pam?
In that the Human Rights Commission has found that this resolution is in line with the city's covenant, I move to adopt the attached resolution supporting the Standing Rock Sioux Nation and the Water Protectors.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Pam, and seconded by Al. We can discuss it. Anybody? Paul?
I will be voting against this resolution because pipelines are safer than rail tank cars, and the possibility of a catastrophic rail disaster in Winona and all the cities on major rail crude line routes is significantly greater than with pipelines. I also support the Northern Pipeline to the Port of Superior, Wisconsin, and any Southern pipeline. Winona itself has had a pipeline for natural gas for many years, which has been safe and benefited safely many people by providing fuel for heating, jobs, and cooking, and so I will not be supporting it.
Okay, George?
Or Steve? What does it mean for the city to support this or not support it? What are the... What are we looking at? If we support this, what are we looking at? If we don't support it, what are we looking at?
I'm unclear as to what you mean by what are we looking at.
Or I mean, what does this mean for the city if we support this?
I think it's a statement on behalf of the council to stand in unity with the Dakota Nation as requested. If you read the resolution, it talks about common values, talks about bounding us with a covenant of friendship. I don't think it makes any political statement regarding, you know, outside of that and what the letter stated from Chuck today.
What does this mean for the city if we do not support this?
I think you'd have to ask the folks involved in the Unity Alliance that have asked us to support and stand in support with them.
I think it would send a not very good message to our Dakota friends if we didn't support it. My first reaction on seeing this was sort of like, well, what does this have to do with Winona? You know, this is an issue in North Dakota, and, you know, is it appropriate for the City Council to weigh in on a protest in North Dakota? But I think we do... I signed these covenants four years ago, and I think that we do have a special relationship with these people. And, you know, if you're thinking about this a lot, I guess I've come to the conclusion that to not pass it would be worse than to pass it, and I think that I will vote for it for that reason.
Al?
You know, we've had before us at this table, not often, but we've had issues that are more of a political nature in taking a stand. I remember a few years ago, we had one for a marriage amendment from the state, and we decided this really wasn't in our purview. But this is, simply because we have this covenant relationship with the Dakota and with the other tribes that are signatory to that covenant. And it behooves us really to do this and go forward with this, simply because, to me, if we don't, then we're just like all the other treaties that have been written and broken over the years. And this is not something that's going to cost us anything, but it's going to mean a lot to those people who are involved in this process. Now, whether or not pipelines are safe, whether trains are safe, you know, I don't know enough about that to get involved with this, but there seems to be enough of an issue here that many hundreds of people, if not thousands of people, are also involved in this on both sides. I would hope that it would come to a relationship end that everybody benefits from. I don't know if that'll happen, but I'm hoping that it will, and I'm hoping that the resolution we pass tonight will take one tiny step toward encouraging people to come to a conclusion and come to an end for this so that we can go ahead. I, you know, just thinking about a pipeline under the Missouri River, not only for the folks at Standing Rock, but for all the people downriver, I mean, it just doesn't... You know, I know pipelines are safe, but... But. And so, I really don't know... And again, you know, those people in North Dakota have to deal with that. But in this case, this is a small step that we can take to encourage support for this
Other comments? Want to vote? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
And moving to item 5.2 is the extension of the lease agreement for the Boathouse LLC. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Al?
Question on this, I guess, what is the reason behind the request for the extension? And when will the restaurant itself be open during that extension?
Chad, you want to address that?
Mayor, Council, we granted or opposing the extension primarily for two reasons. One, which maybe seems a little bit redundant, is that we need to... The city would like to renegotiate the agreement with the boathouse, primarily because of the work that's going to happen adjacent to the restaurant. So, we talked about the Main Street Gateway and the improvements to Levy Park. The restaurant is certainly affected by those improvements. So, both from a construction standpoint, what is the impact for the restaurant? And then, when the project is over, there's some positive impacts from the city and some expectations we feel need to be addressed within the agreement. As for hours, I'm not 100% sure we can certainly get back to you on that. They are closed during the winter months or have limited hours during the winter months. I can't give you a definitive answer tonight.
Okay. You know, my concern is that, you know, we extend this, and then they're not open to serve the public, and this might prevent someone else from coming in and running a facility. But I understand the reason for the construction. I understand that. They've been a good tenant all along, you know, but I just want to make sure that those questions were answered and we've done that. Thank you.
Part of the conversation we had at a meeting was to talk about, you know, in the new agreement, we'll establish clear hours and participation and events in Levy Park and all of that. It was just that we have a 30-day agreement, and we can't get it done in 30 days, so might as well just extend it longer.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hears.
Item 5.3 is the establishment of the ice climbing area. I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle, and I think I heard George, so we'll give him the second. Discussion? Chad, you want to do a little update?
I'll ask my question then.
Mayor, Council, we are getting close to establishing the ice climbing area. I did want to mention to you that it is within your packet, that we did have the League of Minnesota Cities walk this area and review this area with city staff and the MCA. And it's important to note that they do not consider ice climbing to be a stunting activity, and therefore, it's covered by the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust liability coverage. That was a major step that we needed to verify. Another piece was that in order for us to run the equipment to create the ice, we needed to run the water hose over private property, and we needed to get permission from that owner and have an agreement in place. That's the next item on your agenda. And then, of course, we did, which you are in the process of approving, did receive the donation from the MCA, the Minnesota Climbing Association, for the equipment to operate the ice park. I will tell you, though, tonight, as an update, we're not moving forward the ice park until we clear up one issue, and that is that the ice climbing area for reference, this is Sugarloaf. The ice climbing area is in this area right here, shade and red, and we just need to verify the exact property line. This kind of triangle shape and this thin layer is city property, and these are all private property. So, we have a property owner who has stated he has interest in the property. We don't believe that's correct, but we need to look into that further before we go ahead and create any of the ice columns. Further on this map, as long as you're looking at it, again, reference is Sugarloaf. We do... The city does have an agreement in place with the Dinah Realty property. This is where we would direct people to enter, to access a trail, this is rough, but a trail up to the ice climbing area. So, we do... The city does have access adjacent to the Dinah property through an agreement and an easement. So, we are a step away. That's an important step that we just need to verify.
Could you define stunting activity for me?
I'm trying to think of a good example of a stunting activity.
Jumping off Sugarloaf with those cape things.
Yes.
That would be stunting.
That would be stunting.
An umbrella, maybe?
That would be stupid. Stunting.
I think I could probably give you better examples of not stunting activities. You know, skateboarding in a skate park is not a stunting activity. Snowboarding is not a stunting activity. Again, I can't think of an example. Something with much greater risk is what the league would define that as.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a practical question of Chad as we go forward. You know, we did receive the equipment from the Minnesota Climbers Association, and who is going to, A, install it, B, maintain it, and C, store it? And where?
Mayor, Council, the equipment, so I guess going in reverse order, the equipment is not difficult to store. We have several locations where we can do that within park property. Park Maintenance Shop would be one. East Rec is another location that's possible. So, there's not an issue with storing the equipment. What we would do is hire what we would consider experts in the area from the MCA as city employees, and so, city employees would install, and city employees would maintain the equipment if, again, assuming you're going to accept the donation.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hears.
Item 5.4 is the ice climbing area. Agreement for the use of the land.
I'd make a motion, direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. I'd like to thank the Birdzaws for their cooperation here, and without their support, it couldn't happen, I think. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hears.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Well, we'll start with Al tonight.
Thank you. I guess, you know, last meeting, I made a comment about the use of dynamic braking on vehicles in the city primarily on Highway 14 as it enters the city, and I've received word that there has been some enforcement activity happening. The individual that was concerned about that has indicated to me, anyway, that he's hearing less and less as far as use of those devices, and I appreciate the police department's response in dealing with this in a fair manner, to just let people know that if you're not aware, that this kind of usage, unless it's an emergency, is really not allowed within the city. And I also want to wish, along with the mayor, everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. Michelle? Paul?
I also would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And now that the Winona Area Humane Society has completed their fundraising event, I will start the process of fundraising for the dog park by giving a check.
Here, here.
Towards the dog park. I would also like to recommend to the council in the near future to consider purchasing the Y MCA building for a 200-child community daycare center operated 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in a private partnership with local industry modeled after the daycare center provided by Harmony Enterprises for their employees and the community there. WSU and Minnesota College Southeast could partner with the city in providing licensed daycare for train workers and training workers and employment for their students. Area employers could secure placement for their workforce by committing to underwrite the facility cost. It would also provide senior center facility sharing, enhancing the package for all and use for the site itself. And I will give to the council and anybody else who wants a copy of the Harmony activity that is going on there and for their reference and reading.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Anything else?
No.
Pam?
Yes, well, there are still a lot of leaves falling, and there's still a lot of leaves being brushed into, raked into the... Off the curbs, carefully raked off of people's lawns into the gutter. This is completely not the right way to go for many reasons. I was just in... So, I'm looking for an alternative, and I was just in Iowa City where the habit there is all the residents move their leaves right down to the boulevard, pile them up right on the boulevard, and the city comes by with a big vacuum cleaner truck and sucks up all those leaves, and they're gone. They're not in the storm sewer system. They're not in the storm sewer system. They're not polluting their lakes. So, I will be interested in talking about that or any other alternative. It's amazing to me to see how meticulous people are to brush off their own yards and then pollute the local waters. So, that's my comment for tonight. Don't do that.
I think they just don't know.
I think they don't know.
I had a neighbor thanking me for the city picking up the leaves that she raked into the street.
Yeah.
I said, no, no, you're not supposed to do that.
George?
Okay, thank you. You know, as we pass this resolution tonight here with Winona Dakota Unity Alliance, you know, I asked that, you know, you can pass this on to Chuck, that you take the step that we work towards ending violence, because I know up in those areas, there gets pretty contentious in that with this, that we move towards more peaceful demonstrations and peaceful resolutions up there. Also, alternate side parking is into effect, and I didn't talk to Pam earlier. I did not. I have in my notes, leaf control, leaf vent.
All right.
I heard from about four people I work with. I know it's an expensive piece of equipment. It could mean another employee, but, you know, Steve, if you could look into, meet with, you know, Public Works and find out just... They say La Crosse has a good one. Is there something we can do? Yes, it's going to be expensive, more personnel, but I think the people would really, really appreciate it if we can come up with something. So, your homework for the holiday weekend.
I think John Howard put you guys up to this.
Also, as the mayor mentioned, congratulations to the Winona Senior High School Windhawk Football Team, who will be representing our city on Friday. I will be there, and I'm going to be carrying my Chicago Cubs sign that says it's going to happen. So, I'm going to try to steal all the press. But anyway, wish them well, and they have a pretty strong opponent, so they will be representing our city very, very well. And also, I'd just like to send wishes of good health to Donnie Schultz and also to Matt Palowski, the owner of Poot's Tavern, as they battle... Matt Palowski, the owner of Poot's Tavern, as they battle some health problems right now, and they need our, our prayers and our thoughts with them, and Happy Thanksgiving.
I know I had my turn already, but I just remembered, there is a fundraiser tomorrow night for the Truster Trolley. It's at the American Legion from four to six, no, five to seven. Stop in, get some chili, and help out Clarence.
Mayor? Now we're talking about lunches, or dinners. Tomorrow night at 5:00 at East Interrec Center, there is a free will Thanksgiving dinner, so I'm sure volunteers are needed, so I know I will kind of try to make it. Thank you.
All right. We're done talking about food.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. The approval of the minutes from November 7th and 15th, the final adoption of an ordinance to convert Maine and Third to a four-way stop sign, and an ordinance for a yield intersection at Service Drive and West King Street.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.
Please don't...